It can't be home.
That's so cute.
Why?
It's already been all the fun.
Oh, yeah. That's a great time.
Okay, we're cheering for you. Look at all of us, we're here. We're cheering.
Are Tuesday, Monday Tuesday? I don't know. I haven't. No, because people are airtime. Pam, are we having a special morning on Monday, Tuesday?
Monday mornings.
What time?
I think it's just that's.
Just how is this life?
It's a study session, anyway. And, I mean, the bottom line is, I mean, it does have some financial impact, so.
It does.
It does.
Well, it's a link.
And they can never.
Yeah, they're talking.
I've been devoted.
Oh, no, you're the student, uh, student board member now.
Good job.
You do.
I'm gonna ask.
Did she tell me to face?
Sorry about that. Loveless. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, we're amazing. Okay, we're gonna bring, oh, we have speakers. Before consent, correct. Okay, good afternoon. We're going to bring our Beverly Hills Unified Schools District Regular Board of Education meeting to order February 25th at 5:24 PM. Sorry for the delay. At this moment, if we could please have Mr. Loveless come and lead us into the flag salute. Please.
Losing my voice a little bit. But, ready to begin? Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to make, okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda. Are you gonna cough through my entire motion? I mean, for real. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agenda. We're pulling item 12A and we are relocating 9A3 to after public hearing. Public comment.
Okay, do I have, I'll second that, Mr. Margot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Report from closed session, Mr. Dr. Bregge.
In closed session, the board took action, five to zero, to issue notices of non-relection to probationary certificated employees identified by the employee number XE1058505 pursuant to the Education Code, Section 4429, I'm sorry, 44929.21B, effective at the end of the 2019-20 school year and directed by the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. And the board took action to approve settlement agreement 0AH2019100937, five to one approval.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Okay, with that, we're going to move into public comment. I have here with me a letter, a note from Cindy Trost and Rusty Benegas. And Mrs. Eastman, it seems like you're ceding your time to, one minute to Mrs. Trost and one minute to Mrs. Benegas, is that correct? Thank you. Mrs. Trost? A minute and a half, okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Is this on, actually? Oh, all right, then I'll just speak up. Okay. Put my glasses on, I'll help.
Is it working?
Okay, hello? Oh, there it is, it's green, so, we'll go. Hello, I'm here today to address board member Walker Schuman and the comments that you've made in the community and on social media regarding the start of the BHEF summer school. At the January 28th school board meeting, after answering questions from board members, including yourself, this board unanimously approved the agreement for the use of school property between the Beverly Hills Unified School District and the Beverly Hills Education Foundation. The summer school dates were specified in the agreement as June 8th to July 10th, and you voted to approve the motion, dates and all. It was brought to my attention that the next day, you sent emails to staff and administration at Beverly Hills High School as well as district cabinet members requesting that they provide you with the BHEF WASC report that I referenced in our discussion on the 28th. Your request was not made directly to BHEF. Instead, you consumed and utilized district time and resources in an attempt to gain access to the report. It's important that members of our community know that I personally spoke to you and offered to meet with you to hear your concerns, and it's important to point out that you are not entitled to review the requested information because as a private corporation, BHEF is exempt from the Freedom of Information laws which regulate government information. However, had you made the request directly to BHEF, the information would have been provided to you as a courtesy. I've noticed that when discussing summer school, you often refer to the BHEF Summer Academy as our summer school, which would lead members of our community to believe that the summer school you're referencing is a BHUSD summer school program. And I'd like to remind you and clarify for the public that BHEF Summer Academy is a private, WASC-accredited summer program offered by the Beverly Hills Education Foundation, a 501(c)(3) private corporation, and we are not under the purview of the Board of Education of the Beverly Hills Unified School District. We actually pay a fee to the Beverly Hills Unified School District to utilize this space for our summer school. We are not a government institution and we are independent and separate from BHUSD. As egregious as the incidents I have outlined are, over the weekend, you chose to endorse Crossroads Summer School Program on your Facebook page, and I quote, "For my BHUSD friends, if our summer school dates are too early for you, please check Crossroads for alternatives. They run 622 to 724. Registration begins 3/3." You also provided a clickable link that goes directly to their registration page. Did you see that the tuition for that summer school is twice as much as the cost to attend the BHEF Summer Academy? And did you see that they don't offer Health, which is the class with the largest enrollment at the BHEF Summer Academy? You are endorsing a summer school that overwhelmingly does not meet the needs of our community, and you are encouraging families who might otherwise stay with BHEF, which employs BHUSD staff and offers BHUSD-approved curriculum to attend another summer school. While visiting your Facebook page, I took the time to review your past posts. Since BHEF had announced its summer school earlier this month, nowhere did I find a post whereby you promoted our registration, which is now underway. Have you forgotten that any funds BHEF clear after the expenses for summer school go into the general fund? The exact fund which over 40 years has donated millions of dollars to this district? You referenced in your closing comments on February 11th that you continue to receive emails from students and families supporting your agenda for summer school to start a week later. It's curious to me that BHEF's contact information is all over our promotional material and on our website and on our registration page and has been published in the newspaper. And to date, we have received a handful of calls related to the start date of our summer school, and those calls have come not from Beverly Hills residents but from out-of-district families. More importantly, I ask you, why haven't you referred those families who have reached out to you back to BHEF? And in closing, I hope that after tonight, you will stop being divisive at a time when it is so important for us to work together for the benefit of our students. I would ask that if BHUSD families come to see you seeking information about choices, that you'll refer them and their families to guidance counselors, who, by the way, are the most qualified resources in our school district, to offer families advice on alternative programs and affordable options for getting the coursework they need to satisfy graduation requirements for Beverly Hills High School. And I further hope that as an elected member of our school board, you'll support this education foundation and refrain from hindering our fundraising efforts of the only education foundation in this city whose sole purpose it is to raise funds to donate to our Beverly Hills schools, which support programs that would not otherwise exist.
Thank you, Mrs. Trost.
I think I have the right to respond to comments.
I don't know.
I thought public comment was my opportunity to comment because many comments have been offered.
Comment to a specific board member and allegations that are made, board members are allowed to comment.
Board members and staff are permitted to comment on statements that are made. The only thing we can't have is a dialogue, but comments are permitted.
Am I allowed to comment back to the comments?
No, no dialogue. Sorry.
Well, then, off and down.
That's the rule. No, no, please, you can remain, though.
Well, I don't need to if I can't comment back. So, to begin, I've been clear for actually several years now that the dates for BHEF don't work for all the families. I've asked how that decision-making process, what it looks like and what it involves, and the families that I have heard from in the district exactly have the same issue that I have with the dates of the summer school since they were changed several years ago. For the last three years, the enrollment in BHEF has declined every single year, and I believe that it's tied to the change in the date. Now, last summer, there were other reasons for that. I completely understand with reconfiguration, there were complications that contributed to the diminishing number, but this is now the third year of a decline. From three years ago to two years ago, we lost half of the enrolled students that were in BHEF. Why I asked for the WASC report was specifically because you said that in the WASC report, it demonstrated that it community support.
Did you ask BHEF for that WASC report?
We're allowed to have a dialogue. We are allowed to have a dialogue, okay? The reason that I didn't ask a guidance counselor to talk to families that have contacted me about summer school is because a guidance counselor can't change the dates of the summer school. So if you have a family vacation that's planned immediately after graduation or the conclusion of the school year, and you're not back for the first day of summer school for first semester, then you cannot enroll. You cannot miss more than three days in the entire summer school if you actually intend on getting credit for the whole year. I understand how it works. My kids have attended BHEF summer school. They attended last summer for second semester for Health because it's a one semester class, and we weren't in town for the first semester. So, I appreciate that the expectation of BHEF is that all board members will always be on board with all of the efforts, and 99.9% I am entirely behind BHEF and all of the efforts. But to ask me not to share alternatives with our community that is having the same challenge that I am having in getting my daughter enrolled in a class here that she would really like to take, in fact, I've gone so far as to ask, how can we do it blended so that she can take it online and in the summer program for second semester with us here? There's still no alternative because she still would have to be here for the first day, which we're not in town for. And I know I'm not the only family that has this situation. So, I'm sorry that you feel that my influence is so great that it's turning people away from BHEF. That is certainly not my intent, but there are summer school offerings that start later in the summer for families that travel immediately after the conclusion of the school year, and those are alternatives that I am willing to share with the community when they're looking for something that BHEF doesn't offer. To ask me not to do that is not helpful to the overall fulfillment of what's in the best interest of students in our district. Not everyone is gonna be able to come to BHEF, and they still have the right to get additional credit or recovery credit in a summer program.
Thirty seconds. Thank you. See that to me. Mrs. Muman is seating me an additional 30 seconds for comments.
Mrs. Eastman, you mean?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to point out that the summer school that you are recommending is twice the amount of BHFs, and there are alternate choices throughout the community that you could have recommended, including when you referenced on February the 11th, La Canada, it is comparable in prices to BHF. Now, I do not want to encourage families to leave our district, but you are also endorsing a program that is more than two times the cost to our Beverly Hills families than what we currently charge.
But for families that can't make your dates, there are no alternatives.
We're not going to engage in a discussion. Thank you so much, Mrs. Trost, for coming. Thank you, Mrs. Walker, for responding. Next person, Rusty Benegas.
How are my minutes? How are my minutes? So. Four and a half, I think. Yes. My name is Rusty Benegas. I'm the PTA president. My name is Rusty Benegas. I'm the PTA president at Hawthorne School here in Beverly Hills. I stand today with very mixed emotions. My heart is heavy and I am shocked by the events that transpired at the last board meeting as well as after. After the board meeting, I thought it was important to let Mrs. Hacker know that she is supported. I thought it was also important to let Mrs. Walker Schuman know that the very thing that she did to Mrs. Hacker two weeks ago at this meeting is the very thing that we as parents teach our kids not to do, be unkind. My email supporting Mrs. Hacker read as the following. Tristan, PBIS, this is what we teach our kids. The way that you roll your eyes and. The way that you rolled your eyes and spoke to the board president tonight was so unkind and quite embarrassing. My VP, Robin Strug, told Rebecca personally after the PTA meeting and last week that I am the one that it took upon myself to add the coffee with Isabel into our weekly newsletter. You were in that conversation. You knew Isabel did not ask us to add, yet you still alluded to that fact tonight. You said you do not know who suggested to them to add it to their weekly blast. I did that. You knew that I did that last Thursday morning. I thought it was a great idea for parents in this community to get more involved. I did that. Just me. Is Isabel campaigning now or something that we do not know about? Why are we not encouraging more coffees? Is this best practices for a board member to be active on WhatsApp on a daily basis? Social media? Why is it okay for you to be on social media every day and it's not okay for Isabel to have a coffee every so often? This would be hypocrisy at its finest. Such a disappointing display of leadership. The response to me from Mrs. Tristan Schuman Walker is, Rusty, the meeting is recorded, and so it is plainly evident that I did not roll my eyes when a silly and demonstrably false thing... I blocked that out. I understand that the idea of a meaningful discussion is not one that you embrace as your role as the PTA president, but it is what we practice as a governing board. I was not in a conversation at the president's meeting, and you were not part of this discussion that we had in the district office afterwards. Nobody referenced you all, actually, which is why specifically I said, I did not know it came from you and who suggested it, but thank you for clarifying that. I find it ironic that you presume to raise PBIS with me and how you speak to people when you have alienated such a large swath of PTA at Hawthorne, but I digress. You are entitled to your opinion about the coffees, as am I.
There was more. You're going to read the whole thing?
When parents volunteer their time, they certainly don't expect to ever be slandered by a board member for their opinion. The standard of ethical behavior actually falls on you, Mrs. Schuman, Mrs. Walker Schuman. As an elected official, you are held to a higher standard. You are held to a higher standard. What should have been a meaningful discussion turned mean with your email toward me. There have been several occasions actually where you have been mean-spirited within our community. You are so against Mrs. Hacker having coffee, I still for the life of me cannot wrap my head around why. As I stated earlier, I am a member of the PTA. The 33rd district to our report to through the PTA Council actually gave okays for the coffee, in fact, encouraging them. You have a WhatsApp form in which you text daily about happenings in the community. This is an online presence that you have given yourself to use as a platform. A parent wrote in on your platform recently to thank another PTA member for his efforts in getting water filling stations instilled in our schools. An effort that we all know has been about five years in the making from our students, teachers, and district. What an accomplishment to get those finally in. When a parent texts you to say thank you to this particular person on your platform, your response to them was, "This parent is a wonderful human being who does endless work."
She got four minutes to offer it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Benegas. We're going to... You only get four and a half minutes, just to be clear.
Okay. So, "Don't hijack my WhatsApp," was the response from Tristan.
Thank you, Ms. Benegas, for coming tonight. We're going to move on. I would respond, but I don't think it's required. So I'll move on with the agenda.
We are moving on.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item 8i.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Okay, Dr. Breckie, you're on.
Uh...
We're going...
We're going to do 8i.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve item 8i, the ratification of purchase orders.
One second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
We have discussion.
Discussion, I'm sorry.
Mel and I pulled it.
Yes, okay, so you're pulling under 8i. Go ahead now.
Michelle, did you have anything on that?
Well, I'll let you go first, but I was also... I had also wanted to...
Okay.
You also pulled it.
Yeah.
I had questions about it.
Okay, so we'll start. So I had pulled this item... I don't know if people can hear, but I had pulled this item. There was a small expenditure for the vending machine filling company called Refill It, Inc. It was a $1,500 expenditure, so it just got me thinking. I had asked the questions, and I have the answers in front of me, so I will read the answers. So my question was, is there a profit margin on the vending machines and how many machines are currently... Is the Refill It company currently servicing? They service 11 vending machines district-wide, and from the calculations between total sales from August of 2019 to January of this year, the estimated profits were about $17,000. So there's a strong profit margin on the vending machines, because I just wanted to make sure it was okay that we... If we were investing any money into them. But my question was, the $1,500, what category does it fall under as far as an expense? Does anybody... Because is it the operator, the machine software, the machine repairs? Because it was just, I don't know which one, Refill It, the cost of food, which is the largest expense, which is the 1,500?
It should be in an object code 5,000 in the actual budget as a consultant kind of fee, but I can look into that for sure.
The object code is 4,700 on this one.
So we need to check that because it really should be a 5,000 account.
Well, I'm glad I clarified that for you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. What I'm asking is, is this 1,500 just a periodical, periodic payment, like an invoice, but it's part of that overall budget that I'm... Okay, all right, good. Thank you for clearing that up. I appreciate it. Go ahead, Mr. Spitz.
Okay, so, any more questions, Mrs. Marcus?
Yeah.
I don't think her... Can you turn on your microphone, Mrs. Marcus?
She's just taking out one.
I think they need all the microphones on.
I had a question on that.
Okay. Mr. Spitz.
Yes.
It's working.
Purchase order 176095 is a purchase order. It's to increase the purchase order for Team Concepts for the second half of the fiscal year from $2 million to $4 million. And I need to... I know, first of all, I know that Team Concepts is heavily involved in various issues that we're confronted with at this moment. However, I'm asking, Mr. Wade, would it be possible to get some kind of detail as to support this increase from a double to... From $2 million to $4 million for half of the year?
Yes, there's three areas that drive this increase that we're asking for. The first area relates to the hiring of additional DSA inspectors for the projects at the high school and at El Rodeo. We hire those as subcontractors through our primary vendor, so we've had to hire additional DSA inspectors, and that's caused an increase in this contract. Secondly, we are now billed for some of our oil well costs, and so that's just now being billed to us through this vendor. And then finally, a lot of this is related to the security project that we're working on, and our hope is in the end that some of that will be reimbursed to the district. So those are the three components that drive this increase.
Mrs. Marcus, and then...
What fund will they come out of all of these? General fund or are they specified?
So these will come out of the bond, so not out of the general fund.
So can... Does anyone else have a question? No. So just to piggyback on what Mr. Spitz is asking, I would be in support of what Mr. Spitz is asking for, but my request would... I would modify the request to say that, could you come back and break it up for us and those three components so that we have a visual of what we're capturing with that increase?
Most are likely.
Okay, great. Would you be agreeable?
Oh, I definitely agree. For this kind of money...
Money, it's double.
I think that it's essential.
Yes. Any... So...
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think we also have to just confirm that the increase is part of the overall soft-cost budgets that we have for that measure and that it's just that the PO is accelerating the payments because the workload shifted from, you know, these POs are submitted periodically.
I understand, so we should have a breakdown of that.
So we should know how it balances with the final...
Yeah, but three of us are not on the ad hoc committee, so I'm not sure if you probably...
We don't talk.
I mean, but it is substantial. It's double, and it's too... So I just think we're required to do our due diligence here and just, you know, make sure that we understand what it is we're being asked to approve. So we're going to... Yes, so who made the motion?
This will eventually, though, affect other projects, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? And what will be available at the end for other projects?
We're hoping some of these get reimbursed through other sources. Our hope is that in the end that most of them get reimbursed, but some of them will be bond expenses. For example, the DSA inspectors, those will stay as bond expenses.
So, Mrs. Marcus, we'll have to find out, and I guess we'll find this out and bring it back to us, if that increase is an increase in the overall budget or the overall payments and the schedule of payments, because that's all the PO really serves as, is to just let the financial office know that they're approved to pay those invoices. So, yeah, and I don't know the answer to that either, so I think we all need to understand that, so.
Okay, great. So you made the motion.
I made the motion, yeah.
So, and who's... So we're going to eliminate that. We're going to take that out of consent, right? Or we had a question.
Yeah, we just...
For backup, so it's going to come back at the next meeting? You'll bring it back to us as a standalone item for discussion or an update?
It's up to the board.
Yeah, we can give... I think we should give Dr. Breckie... We can ask...
We still have to vote on that.
Ask that department to bring an update on those figures. Right.
Okay, great. Okay.
Call for a vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's five zero. And so we will now go to Dr. Breckie for discussion on branding update.
Okay, so I'm going to actually turn this portion over to Ms. Starkins, who's going to give you a quick update on branding.
Good evening, everybody. I am here to bring you a very exciting update about our school spirit program. Firstly, I will touch on the BHHS Style Guide, which has come a really long way, and then I will talk about the scope of work, which each of you have in front of you, that will cover the rest of the district, what I'm going to return to the Board of Education with at our next meeting, and how we will then move forward in implementing the high school style guide. So firstly, I want to, if you may, to ask you to cast your eyes over to the front row of seats, and you can see there some examples of spirit wear and t-shirts and hat... A hat from Beverly Vista, which all display different versions in slightly different colors of green and different bulldog logos on them. For people watching at home, you can see on the screen that we have those different assortments of logos throughout the district and that that is where this project came from. And I would just like to point out that we have made great strides starting with the high school. So as you're aware, it's been a little while since I've come and given you an update, and at the last presentation, I shared with you the next steps and what would be completed, and those things have been completed. And because of this, we were further ahead than we anticipated with the high school. Long before I came here, this project started with a company called Huntun &amp; Co., and they had started creating the BHHS Style Guide. They had created some incredible assets, and there are a few things that needed completion which you voted on tonight. That covers the dedicated BHHS logo, which is iconic, as you can see there on the green, where it used to be, unfortunately, it looks a little bit more covered in construction now, but that is an iconic sign. It also covers the color precision, which I discussed at our last meeting, where things were printing a little bit more red than orange. Font finalization, so exactly what fonts we were going to have for the high school. The bigger file version, so an AI version means that you can blow the size way up rather than having a blurry PNG file, so that's just a file type. And recreating an option for each club or team, whether it be baseball, as Mr. Acupro has just joined us, or any other team, that they can slap their name into that section. So this work will take about two weeks to complete because it's just finalizing those few things, which I'm very excited about. The great thing is that the high school is really setting the tone for the rest of the entire district by doing this first, and I think that that will leave a really significant legacy, as you have discussed. So the scope of work that was sent out for the rest of the district, as I mentioned, is in front of you. It's the official style guides, what exactly we are asking the interested parties to present to us. I've received, and the slide it actually says, one proposal just this afternoon as I was walking across here. I received an additional proposal, and I was expecting to receive two more, so I'm expecting about one more from different companies, and it will be very exciting to then look at which is the best fit for us moving forward. I anticipate that at our next Board of Education meeting, I will come to you with that contract with the proposal from one company. Hopefully, a representative will also come with me and answer any questions that you may have. We will then begin the development of the style guides for the rest of the district to be completed by June. So this will all happen within this school year, which is absolutely so exciting. I know especially for a lot of our PTAs have been anxious and eager to have that style guide ready so they can have some really clear and concise logos to move forward with. So this process will absolutely include the community and school stakeholders. It's not going to be done in a silo. And finally, we will be then implementing, probably at that date in two weeks, the BHHS Style Guide. So there's a little example for you on the left, a letterhead using the new branding, and on the right, what they used to use, which literally just says Beverly Hills High School on the right, using the district's logo. So the contract that you have voted on tonight will be executed, and we will be able to then roll out things to our PTAs, to our high school ASB, who are so excited to create a lot of logo wear in the coming weeks. We'll be able to then have that really consolidated look at the high school, which sets the tone for, as I said, the rest of the district, which is very, very exciting. To also assist in rolling this out, for everybody to be able to see, well, actually, what is this, and where do I access these files, and how is it best that I use this? The style guide will be available on a newly created dedicated communications page under the department section, and that will help everybody to navigate, what's the name of that font again that I meant to be using for this presentation, and questions like that. And that completes my presentation. If there are any questions, I would be delighted to answer them.
Okay, Mrs. Marcus. I mean, sorry. No, Mr. Marcus, if she goes, she's going to go on that.
Going back to page three, I'm a little bit confused by the fact that 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 things for Beverly Vista and two little pictures for Horace Mann. Seems to be an inequality there between...
There was. So at my previous two presentations I made, I mentioned that the PTA at Horace Mann actually started establishing a style guide years ago, which was incredible because they had had the most consistent branding of any of our schools. So this slide has been in all three of my presentations now, and the school with the most differences has been the, well, what is now the middle school, but it was just Beverly Vista. And so that's why you're just seeing a little snapshot of all of those different schools and the logos that they've had over a period of time.
Okay, and when you're bringing back the contract to us, or some contract...
So in, I'm hoping in two weeks at the next board meeting.
Are we going to get a chance to look at those also, or are you just... Or you're just gonna bring back to us the one contract that is gonna be selected by you or by your committee? Or what's, how's that gonna work?
So we're going to use an established criteria to select the appropriate company for the work that will be reviewed by Cabinet. And then I will bring that contract with that company back to you then.
Wait a minute, just clarify. So who's choosing? You said the Cabinet's choosing the contract, but who's chose, choosing the logos? How are you going to streamline these?
Oh, sure. So the process throughout...
I think that's the question. Did I misunderstand? I think the question was, who is going to narrow these logos? Down to one? Like down to one or two? Two, I don't know how you're gonna do this.
Fair enough. So I would love to use a similar process that I used at the high school, which happened before I actually arrived. And I heard was really successful with the community. And there was a lot of stakeholder input. And a lot of the community had the opportunity. So we'll develop focus groups. The first meeting will be a 90-minute meeting where they come and they answer questions that are general about what, for example, if we're talking about Hawthorne School, what about this school makes you most proud? What feelings do you get when you look at these colors? General questions that evoke feelings and thoughts and ideas and collect them. And make sure that we've got a good representation from all of those stakeholders, whether that be students and staff. And I think it's very important to have people who went to the school and have, perhaps alumni from the school. So a really broad range, that was the model that they used at the high school. And we've looked at adopting that, adopting that when we move forward with this. And so that team will then meet again once the, whoever is chosen comes back to them with their design options and go over that with them and have their input for a final time, for a one-hour meeting. So obligation from those stakeholders that we would be requesting would be the initial 90 minutes and then the final one-hour meeting.
You said, "Tonight, we're gonna be presented with a contract and consent in response to your last board presentation to complete the Beverly Hills Style Guide with this company." Do you have the, not the contract, but the actual thing that you're gonna show us? That, is that in here? Or is that what's gonna be covered?
That's what's gonna be completed.
That's to be done in two weeks?
Correct.
And...
The contract you have, it's in the agenda. So it's just, it will be like any other contract that's in the agenda. It's part of consent.
What is it in the agenda here?
It's the approved contract. It's item 8E.
8E?
Yeah, we voted on it.
Oh, we've already done it?
Yep.
Well, that's the Huntoon...
To avoid the rubber stamping of things?
It's okay.
Okay.
So are we moving on?
You have something to say, Thomas?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the update. I came in kinda halfway through, but I caught a little bit of it and I looked through it. But I just have two questions. Is the crest that is like seen on this, is this gone? Or are we still gonna, is it still gonna be used? Or...
So that would be involved in the reworking of the shield that was actually voted on prior to me arriving here. And they decided to go in a more modern fashion.
It's not on here. Okay, and also for the, the letterhead?
Yes.
Is that the logo that's gonna be officially on it? Because I don't know, I just feel like the shield or another, like a more concise image or something?
The finalized letterhead won't be done until the district branding gets done. So the process for it, great question, thank you. The process for it would be to, that this is an interim step, that they have something that's part of the new Style Guide that's rolled out and people can actually identify and see, okay, we're making progress, we're moving in the right direction. These are the colors, it's a little bit more modern. But in terms of including the district, it would be very important for any school letterhead that the district would be included on that. And this one doesn't have that inclusion because the district branding has not been finalized as yet.
Thank you, Ms. Starkins. Couple of questions. Is the budget for this process been, is that part of an improved budget? How it's, because I know it's broken down into small pieces.
Sure is.
Yes. So I'm just wondering where, what line item did that appear under?
So it comes out of the superintendent's budget. This is something that we actually budgeted for last year. But with reconfiguration, we were just able to get to it. And we had discussions that we thought, let's do reconfiguration first, that makes sense, and get settled, then continue on.
Okay, thank you. And then El Rodeo seems to be absent from all of this process.
El Rodeo is in your scope of work. So if you look at your scope of work, you'll see El Rodeo on that.
Well, on this scope of work here, on the first list on top, it doesn't list them under the mottos.
Because there's no motto right now.
Well, I understand that.
If you go ahead to the second page.
Right, I see it on the second page, that's why I was asking. And I didn't see it in the presentation here.
Yes.
So I don't know. That's why there were two strikes and one plus. So I was just wondering where it sat in all the process.
So it absolutely sits. It's no question that we need to do something for El Rodeo. It's coming, the architects need to know, what colors are we using? What logo do we need to put on the wall? What's happening with this? So absolutely, it's included. The reason, you're absolutely right, there's no motto, is because there is no motto. I had some, a few suggestions today after a social media post of the fireplace that was discovered by the construction, which was incredible, it had a quote on it. And a few people wrote to me and said, will that be the new motto for El Rodeo? So there are a lot of ideas from our community. And we would look to create a motto as part of this process for El Rodeo.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, this is, this is a great example here because it looks like we have five different BVs in the district. And then looking at this, it's the same thing. So I'm glad we're finally narrowing all this down.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Spitz?
This is my wheelhouse. This was my prior career. So I am always very excited to see this type of marketing and branding effort coming together. So thank you for the presentation. I like the work that's already been done. I'm looking forward to fine tuning it a little bit. And I can't wait to see what, what else this effort yields.
Thank you very much. Yeah, so I had a question. You said you're gonna have focus groups, right? So who will be invited to be part of that focus group? And my question is, are, why, have you given any thought to maybe having students vote on what they want to do and then adopting that?
So the voting process is tricky. Would you like me to answer your first question or second question first?
Yes, I just, I think I would be in favor of having this. Students don't really get to decide on much. And I think that this would be a very, just kinda like the way they adopted their logo. I just kinda wonder why we're not using the same approach for this.
Their logo?
The, yeah, not the logo, their, the motto, I'm sorry.
So the students didn't vote on the motto. And that would be for the same reason that we wouldn't selectively only have the current students. Because their vision, it certainly should be a part of it. And so we would have a current ASB representative and the future ASB representative as part of this focus group. But I have learnt, being, this is actually my one-year anniversary in the district now, that it's important to include stakeholders who used to go to the school as well as the kids who are currently in the school. Because they bring a different perspective as to what the legacy of the school has been, rather than just the opinion and perspective of the kids who are there right now. Which is why when I floated this with leadership and I spoke to a few principals and community members, it was, it was brought up to me, don't just look at the kids who are there right now and what their perspective is. Think, think much more broad. We saw it with what happened with the Beverly Vista name and the naming of what happened. Should it be Beverly Hills Middle School? Or should it be Beverly Vista Middle School? And I know that transpired before I actually got here. But from what I saw on the board meetings and what I've heard about it, it's really important to consider your alumni and people who have had that strong tie and connection with the school and include all of those people. So alumni, current students, current teachers. And including everybody like that would be really important, in my opinion, to include them in the focus group.
So only two students would be part of the focus group, then?
Yes.
I don't think that's enough.
Well, the focus group will be about eight people.
Right, so they would be outnumbered, the students.
I wouldn't anticipate that it would get to a vote.
Okay.
But we could certainly look at adding more students.
I'm just kinda shocked that it's going to be decided. I didn't know the process. And I, I think the students should be part of it. I think they should drive it. I mean, you're gonna give them options, it's very simple. It's not like they can come up with their own option. But, you know, you're, it seems like you're far, you're far into the process. So, you know, just, just continue, I guess, at this point.
Well, no, I think this is exactly the point to take on board feedback and for me to make adjustments. I'm going off something that was done at the high school and off my personal professional experience. But I think that's absolutely valid. And perhaps we should double the number of students or have equal numbers, adults and students within that focus group to level out that perspective that they have on the school. And I don't think it's too late to make those changes now. So I really value your feedback.
Hey, Ms. Acupero, what do you think?
I mean, if it's a total of eight people, I think that two students actually is enough voice. Because I feel like it's more of like a, like a forum, more of like a voting, like, oh, they have a majority rule kinda thing. I mean, I think...
Okay. I'm gonna listen to you.
I mean, I'm one student representing...
Many.
Many, so, I mean, yeah.
Okay, great. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just make a comment, if I may. Over, over the years, over the decades, each of our schools has taken a lot of pride in its own logos and, and presentation of itself. And what I'm wondering is that when it comes, again, when it comes to the logos and so forth for the individual schools, are those individual schools gonna decide what they want?
Yes, absolutely.
Huh?
Yes, absolutely. They're the ones who have, who have been here. And it's, it's their legacy and their pride that they have within those schools. So it's very important that each school, as the high school has done, the high school has jointly made the decision for how they will have their logo and how they want to be represented. And so that's very important that that happens at each school. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Brege, moving on with discussion of fifth grade promotion.
So...
Or actually block scheduling, correct?
So I'm gonna do this all in my update. So I've got four different things I wanna talk about. I think that it's important that we stop for a moment and just that, know that this type of work is, I like to use the phrase subtle but intentional. And you may, over time, begin to see some of that intentionality, which, for example, with the type of presentations that we've been using, that it has a consistent look and feel and a very professional appearance, whether we're reporting to our Board of Education and community or if one of us were selected to do a state presentation. This type of work is embedded, really, in everything that we do and everything that we present. I just have four areas I wanna just touch upon briefly just to give you an update. We did have a technology study session last week. And this is a department where we have struggled in as a district. And we've made some decisions that have created a moment for us to, to pause and look at what's been happening, how we've been working, and some of the decisions that we've been making in this department. And so this is just a quick recap of some of the work that we talked about last week, which, which the full session was recorded. We have incredible opportunity right now. And that is that by pressing the pause button a bit to take a look at reorganizing this department at a time when our facilities are changing. We have bond projects. We have communication and training plans that are informing what we do next. We have our district strategic plan that I'm going to talk about in just a minute. But it's an opportunity to place this item, which is so important, into the focus of what we're doing in the future. These are just a few things that we talked about into our single-plan school achievement goals. And you've heard a lot of these. And you've probably seen a lot of these types of phrases and methodology that we will also be including into our strategic plan. This is an opportunity to create some alignment that has not happened in the past. And that's something you'll hear over and over is that this is an opportunity for alignment. We're establishing a technology floor, which we did not feel like we had a good handle on. And so, again, it's aligning and connecting our board goals and our objectives with the strategic plan. It's important that we include our LCAP. One thing that I missed that I didn't put up here, which is equally important to the rest of the items, is also our financial plans and the decisions that we're making towards technology with finances. Talked about the single plans for student achievement. And then also, we had a very successful WASC visit. But they had some feedback for us. And this is the right time to incorporate that information. This driving question is the question that will help guide our work and create principles for us to follow as we work through the strategic plan. And that is what experiences should technology help facilitate for every student as they move through our school district TK through 12. through 12. So just a quick update on our strategic planning, which is off to a really good start. You know, we want to engage our stakeholders, much like Ms. Starkins had said, whether it's a logo or whether it's a roadmap for the future, we need to respect and ask for input into our decision-making. And so this opportunity that we have right now is an opportunity not only to press pause in technology, but even with our school district. We've gone through a very large reconfiguration, and it's the perfect time, now that we're settled and we're moved, to start looking at what the most important thing in our school district is, and that's to improve student learning. And so these are some tenants and values that we're going to be developing over time. We will be giving regular updates, like we have been, to our Board of Education and Community about where we are in this process. After we start collecting information and focus groups are in place, which are happening this week, we will begin to devise some action plans. It's really important that this information doesn't become just another piece of information. And I've heard many times from some of our board members that we need measurable goals so that we can see what our progress is. We will be presenting that information to the board for feedback and approval, and what we haven't done in the past is, you know, once we do have an idea or a plan, is to manage our performance and have some accountability for all of us. Those focus groups will involve well over 100 people, so the next three days are very busy as we begin to look at our staff and our community and leadership positions throughout the school district to help us do a SWAT, so we're going to be looking at an opportunity to look at, you know, our strengths and our opportunities and some of our challenges as well. Moving on to the high school schedule. So we have had an opportunity through reconfiguration to talk about revising and modifying some of the scheduling at our elementary school and our middle school, and we did that through our reconfiguration work. And so our board was very supportive of creating an elementary school schedule that provided opportunities for common planning time, so that teachers could work together and collaborate. The middle school schedule was also, that was revisited, and there were several different models that were looked at by many stakeholders, and we believe we have a good model. What we're doing right now, and the reason why that's is monitoring, is that we are taking an opportunity, now that we're halfway through the school year, is looking back and we're asking ourselves, is there something better? Is there something that we missed? You know, is there, you know, how is this working? And I think it's important to keep revisiting that opportunity to revise and adjust. So we're moving now into our high school schedule, and our high school has been so patient as we've worked through reconfiguration, and we've spent tens of thousands of hours on elementary and middle school education through our reconfiguration process. And we are, right now, only in the exploration phase of looking at our high school and looking to see what can we do to strengthen student learning, what can we do to provide a more engaging environment for our students and our teachers, types of methodologies, teaching methodologies are interactive and personalized. And so we're beginning at this time, just beginning, to look at what options are there for scheduling. And so we did follow at the middle school, we had an opportunity to look at a variety of options and models, and the idea is not for the administration to say, here's what we're going to do, but to create several models so that we can get input from parents and teachers and staff and students especially on some of these models. And so we're only at a point right now that we are beginning to look to see what's possible. And when we get a little further along, we will begin to share these models so that we can get input. That feedback loop, that 360, is critical to the success of where we move forward. And so we do want to know, based on some of the options that we have, and there's so many different considerations that we have to follow. What are we getting right? What are we getting wrong? There may be a hybrid of, with one option of a bell schedule versus another, and then we want to also just get any ideas from you about how to improve what's there or any other ideas. So some of the consideration for even moving to this exploratory time is that we have had a successful WASC but did have some feedback. And so we also have to take into consideration some of the change that's happening at the high school. And so this is estimated, but the completion of buildings B1 and B2 at the high school, and that's a major shift after being in portables for so long, that we have to take into consideration anything that happens at the high school. So even a bell schedule is not a small item. And so we need to ensure that, just like reconfiguration, we have to look at how much change is too much change and how much change is supported and better for student environment. And so that's important to include our construction and our facilities. Oftentimes, that's left out. We have to be aware of our surroundings and what will be coming available, because that takes a move, several moves, to open a school. Senate Bill 328, which was a very controversial Senate bill, that is providing a regulation that we start school 8:30 or later, that doesn't mean to say that we can't have a zero period at all. It just means that the day that you start school, it's 8:30 or later, and then a limited number of students could be part of a zero period. So some of the models that we're starting to develop will be including that information. So I want to ensure that if there's a rumor out there, that is not the case. It's the number of classes that are out there that we are not changing, that option for students to take the classes that they're currently taking. What would shift would be the time. So we do feel like it's important that this become part of our consideration as we develop this exploratory phase into a new bell schedule. Professional development, because certainly it's not just about potentially changing times, it's about how you use that time. And so depending on what option is favored and people might be gearing up for, that might change what our professional development looks like and what type of training for administrators and teachers would be required. Improving the culture and climate is absolutely a big goal for our high school. There's been a lot of change and a lot of shift, and there have been students that have been in portables for most of their education here, and there is some fatigue that's happening in our community and in our school when you are separated by a bungalow. And so it was cool at first, and then all of a sudden, that fatigue starts to set in when you're not sharing hallways and you're not walking next to-- it just changes the whole environment. So we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to bring people together and not push them apart. Scheduling labs and support, we want to make sure that whatever we're looking at going into the future, that we have opportunities to improve in some of the areas where we are struggling with scheduling our labs, providing tutoring support, test makeup within the current schedule that we have. And then currently, we're also going to be looking at what is the timing for this? You know, when would we implement a schedule like this? And my last topic, and then I will open this up for any questions. When I first came to the district three years ago, I began having some conversations with our PTAs and BHGF, and it was interesting, because it was trying to determine some consistency in what the district was paying for and what PTA, BHGF, what they were paying for. And there wasn't a lot of consistency, and so it was a little uncomfortable. When I first came to the district and I was learning that some PTAs were actually paying for paper and some of those basic needs, basic requirements, and so slowly, we've been starting to, through conversation, change some of those things, because those are things that the school district should be providing. And so we're fortunate to have amazing volunteers in our PTA and BHGF that have been so willing to just jump in and pay for things, but it's now figuring out what should the school district be paying for and what should our PTAs be paying for. And so I've already had a conversation at the middle school with the president, Tina Wiener, and Mr. Allen, the principal, and so I'm going to be meeting with our other union presidents as well, so that we can help do a better job of figuring out where those funds come from.
PTA presidents.
The PTA presidents, excuse me. Sorry. And so we're establishing some new protocols and some new traditions, and that's what's happening throughout our district. And so we want to have ongoing conversations with all of our stakeholders and continue that collaboration. We're at a point now with fifth grade promotion, there's been a lot of discussion back and forth, and it kind of fits into what I was just talking about as far as, you know, what does PTA pay for, what does the school district pay for? And so since we're kind of encroaching into new, you know, new territory with moving away from a TK8 to a TK5, we now have a different set of circumstances with our fifth grade promotion. And so we do need to talk about the middle school as well and graduation, but it's really important for us to get some direction so that we can provide what we should be providing for our PTAs, for fifth grade promotion. And I know that this is the kind of thing that, because it's new, that we're going to make some decisions and we're going to move forward, and I think that, very confident, actually, that this will then become what we do for fifth grade promotion moving on. So I just want to report back, so the district office worked with some staff just to look at what, like, the basic needs are, and that's all we looked at right now, was what do you need? And so when I was speaking with Mrs. Kaber and Hawthorne, I just, I asked her, I said, what, you know, what are those basic needs? And, you know, the list can be endless. It really could. You could list 20 things that would make a successful fifth grade promotion, but I wanted to look at what should the school district provide? And so just looking at just chairs and a stage, because Hawthorne is without their auditorium, that it would be important to provide those items. And that's the start of this direction, the start of the conversation for tonight. Our lowest bid, after three bids, is just under $5,000 for the chairs and a stage. And Horst Man, I had some conversations with Mr. Bugby, who's here tonight, who got really creative and decided to look at the current architecture within his school and realized that instead of using a stage, he has this opportunity to use some of the current facilities that are there with staircases and really a stage that's kind of built in, which is obviously unique to Horst Man. So after talking to him, it was that we don't need a stage for Horst Man, but we were looking at providing chairs for him and his students and parents, and the lowest bid was just over $2,000 for those chairs. So that is kind of an update for you on those topics. I think the, I'm happy to answer any questions about any of those topic areas, but at the end, I'd like to come back to getting some direction on how we move forward, because I think timing right now is really critical as we're going to be entering March really soon.
Okay, Mrs. Marcus.
Well, that was a very comprehensive report. Dr. Bergy. Got it, thank you. I have, I'm enlisting in on the technology as I did and being in the study session, being on the strategic plan from the standpoint of the district, I'm pretty much in the know about all those, so it's, I just have a couple comments about the high school and the, just a couple of comments about this, if I can make them.
Sure.
Okay, so we finished the elementary, we sort of finished, and it's still, it's ongoing process. The middle school is still developing, it's, they're all still developing, and we're building on it, improving in what's right, what's wrong, and so on. And it was, it's almost like we're going to be doing a reconfiguration of the high school at this time. So I just want to make sure that we use all the possible stakeholders, students, faculty, and everybody, so that everybody has a stake in it, so to speak, and that's something that I feel is very, very important. I don't want to hear anybody after it's all done saying, well, you never asked these people, you never asked these people. I don't want to hear that at the end of this at all. I want to make sure that everybody feels that they're representative in this process. So that is my comment on that one. Do you have any kind of a timeframe so far as to when you think this reconfiguration, are you looking at next August for this, are you looking for a year from August? When exactly are you looking to implement this reconfiguration at the high school?
That's a really good question. I think that because we don't, we're not coming into this with any preconceived notions of what we want, that it really depends on the finishing this exploration phase and then getting feedback. But I can tell you this, I think that in the next month, month and a half, that we will have an opportunity to begin getting the feedback, because I think things like professional development, I think that that really depends on what model are we selecting? What are we choosing? Is this a slight change or is this a very big change for students and teachers? And so I think that under the list of considerations, that we don't want to put the cart before the horse, that, you know, we need to, we need to look to see, get the feedback and see what that looks like first. You know, if it's not a drastic change, it could be done right away. If it's a pretty big change from what you're doing, we may want to pause and ensure that we have the professional development that might align itself with what we are expecting in the classroom as far as if there are increased teaching minutes, like a block scheduling, which, you know, there's a million different types of block scheduling. So I think we're in that phase where that will happen in the next month and a half to start getting that feedback based on some models that we have. And what I anticipate is taking that feedback and then looking at, then making revisions. I mean, there may be something out there that is overwhelmingly something that we overlooked in this model or this model, but it's going to be several different models. So there isn't one that we're going for, there isn't one that we're pushing. We do really want to get that input, and I think we learned from some of our technology decisions, if I could just say it, that we need to get that input. It's critical for success moving forward. So I think it comes in two phases. I think instead of saying it's going to be next year or that it's definitely going to be the year after, I don't know, but I think that we take into consideration the construction, the Senate Bill 328, which is, that's going to be a big shift for some people. I just think that we have to respect a lot of the changes that are happening.
I appreciate that. And lastly, but as far as the fifth grade promotion is concerned--
Yes.
--I'm all in favor of providing what they need to have to have like a ceremony, in other words, the chairs, the stage, and things like that. I think anything that's over and above that, that the parents would probably want to do, should be about maybe the parents who are the graduating parents. I have a strong, it's a strong feeling that I've always had, I don't know whether it's something that's just my background, but I've always been, if you give kids something so grandiose to start with when they're graduating from fifth grade, and then they get to eighth grade and you have to top what you did in fifth grade, I think you get yourself into really a bind. I think that at the fifth grade graduation, I'm not preventing them from doing what they want, but I don't think that it should be something that's so epic that when they get to eighth grade, then the eighth grade has to do something very epic. I think it should be kept in perspective of what it should be, and that's my comment about--
Thank you.
--the spending on it.
Okay, Mr. Margot.
Oh, Dr. Capero.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Bergy, thank you for the comprehensive update with the reconfiguration of the high school. I mean, I'd love to take a part in that and be involved. I have actually several models for a schedule or some like intermediary between now and fully adopting like a block or whatever, but I have a lot of ideas and, you know, take into consideration like athletics in the afternoon and all the different activities that might be involved, so.
That would be awesome. We'll take you up on that, because that is a big piece. Athletics and activities--
Yeah.
--that's a big piece to incorporate into what we're looking at.
Yeah, and then with the new late start time, so, yeah, I would love to take part--
Thank you.
Yes, I support free consultants whenever we can get them. The, let me get to the right thing. Yeah, the schedule, you know, it's something I've been pushing for, for a long time on my tenure on the board, and I'm glad we're finally getting to it and getting to it correctly with the state bill on changing. I guess the only thing to say, so it can be said publicly, is that whatever change we make should be in alignment with that change, and we only do it once. So that's, you know, you and I have spoken about that, but I want to say that publicly. We don't want to change the schedule and then, let's say, to deal with the time change and then realize we want to do different block scheduling after that. We should just take the time, so if it delays us or puts it out till 21, great, as long as, like, it covers everything. You said CIF is going to be a big deal, obviously. People don't really understand that, but it's going to be statewide. This is going to hit every district, all of this, so everything's going to be changing. For a measly little half hour, as far as fifth grade promotion, so in the one year that I was teaching public school, I had a split four or five, and when I became that half-four-five teacher, they all, the other fifth grade teacher said to me, you're doing graduation. I said, great, thanks, what does it entail? Well, we definitely need chairs and a stage, so I remember that as part of the whole experience. I do like what Mrs. Marcus said about, we got to keep it respectable and keep the tone. You know, it's a fifth grade promotion, it's not a graduation technically, so it's something that, in fact, technically, high school is really the only graduation, isn't it? Eighth grade isn't even a graduation, you're just getting promoted to ninth. So it's, when we let the little birdies out of the nest in 12th grade, that's the real graduation. So anyway, I do support at least giving the schools Hawthorne and Horst Man what they need, and I do also support the idea of anything can be augmented by the graduate or promotion committees at those schools outside of the chairs and stage. But I did want to ask about the risers. Will Hawthorne need risers? Because that's not on here, and I guess what Mr. Bugby is concocting over at Horst Man includes the idea of risers, because you said something about the steps--
Rizers.
Right?
No, using the architecture of the school itself.
Which is the stairs and-- Right, but I'm saying, so you're not requesting risers, though?
No. Correct.
Right, but I'm saying Hawthorne, they might need risers, I don't know.
I'll check into that.
So I'm just saying that that should be part of the package, if it has to be. And we also talked about possibly if this is going to be something that we do for the next few years, do we want to purchase a stage? So that was another question that we had, so hopefully we can look into that and either way, provide that for the sites. Thank you.
All right. So I love the idea of a block schedule, that's something that, you know, we started kind of toying with in FFST, and the later start time was something that I have been behind for the last year. So I think those are two really great ideas. I am hopeful that this is something that we can implement for the fall. I think it would be a great way to give our students some really significant advantages at a time when we really don't have a lot of control over the construction and, you know, some of the other things that they're experiencing. So I think that would be a really great thing to be able to give them for this coming school year, but I recognize that that's a, as you presented, very complex suggestion. So I look forward to having, you know, some information come back as to what the options are and what the best practices are and what the impacts will be and what the professional development-- developments surrounding that is going to be. With respect to fifth grade promotion, I actually feel like this is really tied a lot to eighth grade promotion, eighth grade graduation as well. And I happen to have chaired the eighth grade graduation committee for El Rodeo last year. So I am super familiar with all of the different assortment of expenses, all of the different assortment of fundraising efforts that go into building a budget and creating a great environment in graduation. I agree with my colleagues, am I right, who have commented that I think the more epic you make it, the more you set them up for needing a more epic situation in years following. So I agree, it should be something benign but respectful. In years past at El Rodeo, we had our graduation out on the grass when we had grass. We had, when we no longer had a grass lawn, we had it in the cafeteria in the little overhang area where the red tables were. And our students got to celebrate by class with their teacher and be recognized with a certificate. Last year, they also got a little flower lei, which was really nice. And then generally, the parents all brought and had a picnic lunch with their student. So that was our tradition from last year. I appreciate that now that we're only down to two locations, that it's a little different environment and now that our students are going on to sixth grade, that it requires something different. But just by way of history, when the auditorium closed at Hawthorne, and I believe actually Mrs. Eastman was one of the advocates for having the district help supplement the seating for graduation events at Hawthorne, the district agreed to pay for seating. And I think that's reasonable when a, when a school loses an environment that they prior used for promotions, graduations, whatever. And so I'm inclined to continue observing at that same level. I think it's great that we have three bids. I hope one of them was from JNC Party Rentals because that's the vendor that we used last year at El Rodeo.
It was, yeah.
And they were fantastic. And I will tell you, having been super involved in the nitty gritty, that JNC Party Rentals generally charges $3 per chair for them to do the setup, but if you do the setup yourself, it's only $1 per chair. So there's a significant cost savings. And so as a committee, we decided to do that part ourselves. So we literally zip tied over 500 chairs together so that we didn't incur the expense of that. So, you know, it's a great opportunity.
Community service.
Community service for the students, it's a great opportunity. You know, and for the eighth grade graduation committee, we required parents to actually, not just show up to meetings, but actually volunteer to get the reserved seats. That was our trade off, our promise. And so this was one of the ways at the very end that a lot of parents were able to come and participate and help, help with the setup. I didn't see anything on here about a tent, but I will say, having been involved in that process too, it is a huge amount of work. There are many, many steps. It's something that has to take place on the weekend when no students are on campus, the building of a tent. It also requires water barrels that are filled at our own expense. There are very specific fire codes that need to be met. And there's also a building permit and a fire inspector permit that are also super labor intensive. So we, we had a binder and I actually gave it to the eighth grade class representatives for BV so that they had kind of a guideline to go by this year. So they've got a lot of that information, but having been through it and there were, we had an amazing committee. So if, there are so many of us to ask if there are any questions about how to get that to happen, who the contacts are in the city, who our different vendors are. We have all of that stuff in a big binder and we're happy to share it with whomever actually would like to have it. But I agree that it should be seating that's provided. If our, if our graduating seniors can sit for two and a half hours outside in the stands on the football field and their accompanying family and friends who are in the audience can, can tolerate being out there for two and a half hours, then certainly our fifth grade and eighth grade families also can, can do the same. So to the extent that there's additional desire for things beyond chairs and a stage, I think that that really is a fundraising matter for the PTAs. And again, I have a lot of ideas. We did a lot of successful fundraising in years past, so I'm happy to share if anybody needs it. That's all.
Okay, so Dr. Bergy, thank you for bringing this, I know that I'd asked that we get in front of some of the rumors about getting rid of zero period. And so I'm glad that you have confirmed that that is not something that we're looking to do. I'm happy to see that we had a technology study session last week. I thought that that was very comprehensive. Thank you, Mr. Damico, for bringing that to our attention and for presenting. I was most pleased to hear that some of the issues that some of the teachers had raised were put to rest or, you know, that there was a discussion or a dialogue of back and forth and that it seemed to me that that's going to be something that we're going to be doing with our teachers at the different sites. I would encourage that to continue because at the end of the day, for technology, you know, it's, it's great to have a set of goals, but at the end of the day, it's really the teachers who push everything forward and our entire process is pretty much dependent on that, on their, on their ability to do so. So they're a very important piece of this puzzle. So I, as a one board member, I like to stress that is a very important piece of this for me. So I was very pleased to see that you've taken care of that for the first part, so thank you. As far as, and you know, we're going to have another study session, I believe, in the next few weeks. So we'll be announcing that study session and encouraging people to participate. I think it's important to do so. I want to talk a little bit about the, the schedule. So just to be clear, so this is something that you're looking to carry out, not this next fall, right? Something that most likely will happen the following year?
We're not sure. So it depends on ultimately what the schedule looks like. So it really depends, you know, on the input that we get and the amount of time that we can look at making any revisions. It depends on how big the change is.
Okay. And when you say input, you mean all stakeholders or?
I do.
Okay, great. So we'll look forward to that determination and a new future. For the fifth grade promotion, so I agree with what has been stipulated, but just looking at, so chairs and stage. I do know that some schools, some, in the past, and I think I asked this question two years ago and last year perhaps, there are some R2 factors that go into some of the cost for graduations. And it's been unclear to me as to who splits that cost, if it's been the district or the PTAs. And several times I've been approached by PTA folks asking why, they claim that they're paying for it. And then, so that, that needs, you know, if there's going to be R2 factors, and I'm not saying there should be, I think that's something that the district should pick up, not something that the PTA should pick up because that includes, that's salaries. I mean, it's, it's extra pay. So that has to be clarified. I didn't see that here, but I have seen it in the, in the checks or the, the report, the warrant report. And so it's unclear to me who's actually paying for that. So that has to be looked into and I would advise that that be asked of the principals to see if that's going to be a cost that you foresee that you're going to need to sustain the graduation coordination, the coordination of graduations.
And if I could, I just want to, I'll take some time this week to, to look into what has been past practice and then I can share that with the board.
And it's been unclear to me as to whether, and it seems like some schools have R2 factors and some don't. So now that we're down to two schools, I think it'd be relatively easy to really have some, to be consistent on that front. So I, I don't know what the answers are, but hopefully we can find out and get clarification and, and have some continuity here. Additionally, as it relates, okay, Dustin has the answer.
There was no graduation coordinator position approved through the extra pay committee. We don't have any of that on the list. And so our recommendation would always be that the principals would utilize their unit pay if they were to ever create a position like that, that it would never be in our factor.
Okay, so that then tells me that maybe the PTAs were picking up the cost?
We're not able to release, I mean.
Not this year, I, I mean for last year.
Yeah, maybe, no, no, over the last two years, we haven't been able to release any R factor pay without the extra pay committee agreeing upon and making it standard across all districts. And so over the last two years, so if, if PTA was paying something out of an account, it might have been three or four years prior to.
Okay.
Moving forward, we won't. Yep.
I'm sorry, is there a discussion over here? Do you guys have a question? Ms. Marcus, do you have a question?
No.
No? Okay. The other thing is, yes, and I think the, obviously the diplomas should be something that the costs, district costs that we incur, it shouldn't be something that the PTAs pay for. You know, it's, it's, or whatever it is we're going to give our certificate. What about security? I know sometimes we have security since it's after school. I'm not sure if that's something that's been configured or how that's worked out, but those are the costs, like anything that is solid, that should come from the district, staffing, I think it's something that we need to look at. So I know we have chairs and stage, but I want to make sure we cover all the costs because all the costs are having to do with staffing. Because there's just been talk that the PTAs pick up for this and it's unclear to me what, what we're asking the PTAs to pay for. But I agree with everything. Anything that happens after the graduation could probably be done, you know, led to the committee to decide. Mrs. Marcus has a question?
Well, generally speaking, you were talking about the security, but I think that if the graduations take place during the school day, the security is already there.
Correct.
So that's not something that we have to be concerned about as far as bringing in new.
No, I, I don't know what time they're going to be done this year, the promotions. I would assume it would be during the day, the school year, but in the past.
The way the school day is set up is that there's a minimum day and, and the kids graduate before they leave for the, you know, so it's during the school day.
Well, this is our first time, I, as I.
Well, I'm just talking about what I would, what I would envision.
I would envision the same, but I want to make sure that if they're going to do, the eighth grade graduations, and I guess again, that's the only recourse we have to look back to since we didn't have a fifth grade promotion. I mean, I don't remember my kids ever having anything.
That's new, yeah.
So this is new. So I would hope that, yes, that they would do, that the coordination would take place during the school year, the school, school day. But if that's not done, then they would have to be uniform, you know.
Mrs. Hacker, Mr. Bugby is here. Do we want to hear what they have cooking over there so we can get an idea?
If he, if he's ready, sure.
Is that okay?
I'm just, I'm just giving parameters.
No, I know, but if they're actually in the process of doing it, we can hear from them.
But it should be the same with.
And I can tell you for, I have the budget actually from last year. The graduation committee paid for security. We paid for staff to help out after the graduation, actually, and during the graduation. We paid separately out of pocket for that. We made sure that the diploma covers were, were covered, the photographer, videographer, sound assistant, balloons, flowers, all of that was all out of PTA. That was eighth grade.
Yeah, we're talking about promotion.
Kids for graduation, was it a fee or wasn't there?
No, the fee covers, the transition fee covers the cost of actually a student moving from a.
Okay. So we're going to, we're talking about fifth grade promotions? That's why, that's why we're talking about fifth grade promotions, this is new, so we shouldn't treat it as an eighth grade promotion.
Practices are important to have.
But eighth grade is for eighth grade and this is why we're having this discussion so that we're clear. We've had, I mean, there's been questions, there's been, you know, thought that we weren't going to cover any of these costs and obviously I, I'm happy to hear that there is unanimous support for that. And Mr. Bugby, if you have something to say, if you're ready to tell us a little bit of what your planning has entailed, that'd be great. And then I think Mrs. Eastman has said to me, does she like to chime in to something that Mr. Dust, I don't know, someone said something? Go ahead, please.
Perfect, yeah. If you have specific questions, let me know. I've been working very closely with Mrs. Kaber and Horace Mann already has a promotion staff work, or not staff, promotion committee working together. We've been working very closely. We do want to, how much was the Horace Mann rebuild?
$95 million.
Thank you. We would like to put that to use. It's a beautiful building. Our fifth grade teachers actually did, we had some time because we had fifth grade picture day. So we were out there and we had some time to kind of play with it, to see what it would look like. And the photo ops are going to be amazing. I don't want to give too much away because part of it's a surprise for parents. I would love to share with anyone here, but part of it for our fifth grade parents, it's going to be a little bit of a surprise of how we arrange things. As far as working with Mrs. Kaber, what we talked about doing is for now, unless there's other discussion, Horace Mann doing promotion in the morning, then having a brunch, and Hawthorne doing a lunch, then a promotion, all during the school day so that everyone here can participate in both if you would like.
That's great.
That's wonderful.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I hope that, are there other questions?
No, I, any other questions?
No, they seem to have.
Yes, we appreciate the time.
You are landing again. That's really wonderful to hear.
Mrs. Eastman, did you have something to add? Need to go to the microphone, sorry. So Mrs. Eastman is the PTA Council President.
Hi, everyone. No, I just wanted to say, I wanted to touch on security. Security, whether it's eighth grade or fifth grade, the number of students is pretty much the same. We've always had about 80 to 100 students and I think in fifth grade, we have about 130-ish students. What, how many? 114. Okay. So as far as security goes, whatever security we had for eighth grade would probably be the same amount of security we'd need for the fifth grade promotion. PTA has always paid for the security. I've never really felt that they should pay, maybe for the party they should pay because that's a parent expense, that's a student expense. But I feel that, you know, security is something that could be covered. We don't have enough security probably at one school. We'd have to borrow some security guards to cover. There were issues like the blowhorns and things like that that were nuisance that you wanted the security guards to, to catch on. So it would be really wonderful, like you're, you're talking about, you know, using your funds to, to pay for these kinds of things. Security, I think, is really, really valid for PTA not to have to take.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any more questions?
I only have one more comment. The concern that I have, because we've talked so much about equity, is that whatever we do for one school, for one promotion, is going to have to be duplicated for the other schools and for other promotions. So what, what we're talking about right now is setting precedence and I think that's really the important thing. It's not just a one-off for, you know, this year for this class, for this school site. It has literally got to be district wide.
No, I agree. That's why I decided to put it on the agenda. I think it's a really important conversation to have, especially being that this is our first, you know, promotion, if you will, technically, because we're reconfigured. So we wanted to set precedence and tradition going forward. Mrs. Marcus, anything else?
No, I'm fine with everything.
Mr. Margot? Okay, thank you, moving on. Thank you, Mr., thank you, Dr. Bergy.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Your turn.
May I have a motion, please, for the approval of.
No, no, we have Thomas.
Oh, Thomas, I'm so sorry. I didn't see that. I wrote over that.
Yeah, I have a quick report. Two weeks ago, I think the day after our last board meeting, the one-to-one student laptop rollout officially was completed and it's really awesome that every student now has a laptop. And I'm seeing, especially in my classes, how teachers are starting to use those laptops and it's very new still. And it's, it's very, very new. And so as we continue to move forward, I mean, it's going to continue to be implemented. So I'm just excited about that and I think a lot of the, my peers are, yeah, this is my laptop. Yeah, a lot of my peers are also excited, so.
Great, thank you for sharing that. Is that it? Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the agreement for employment of executive director of construction of facilities.
A second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or, who knows, a five, zero? Moving on to business and finance. Discussion of 7-Eleven committee membership. May I please have, there's no motion. Discussion, and I believe, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name, Steve.
McLaughlin.
McLaughlin is here to answer questions and to lead the discussion. Thank you for being here.
So President Hacker, members of the board, I'm pleased to present Stephen McLaughlin from AALRR to speak to the board and the community about what is a 7-Eleven committee.
Great, thank you, good evening. So I do have a couple slides.
I'm not going to go through the minutia of the law, but when we talk about an advisory committee, we're talking about district asset management. So this all stems from the education code that gives the board of all school districts the fundamental general responsibility to manage our assets. And one of the biggest assets is property. And so all school districts have an obligation to manage the assets, making sure that they're being used to their best ability. And the education code establishes a specific process for school districts to go through, specifically with respect to looking at their properties, making sure they're being used to their best ability, either being used by the district or producing some kind of revenue or other outcome. And so this whole process starts under the education code with an advisory committee. An advisory committee is a separate group of individuals who assess the district's property, come back to the board with a formal report discussing their assessment and giving recommendations as to what can be done with some of our properties. So I'm going to go through a little bit of how that process works. First of all, the membership of the advisory committee. The whole idea about the advisory committee is to make sure that we're getting public input. So the law requires that we have seven members at least, we can have up to 11, and they have to fit these 11, or these seven categories. And as you'll see, it covers a gamut. We have teachers, administrators, and then we have parents, and then also people from the community, specifically business leaders, anyone who rents or owns land in the school district area, people with expertise in property law. And then we also want to make sure that it covers the age group and the ethnicity of our region. So how we do that is we have an application that we usually send out through the community saying, you know, we have this advisory committee, we're looking for people to volunteer. We get those applications and we assess and make sure we've met each one of those requirements. Once we do that and we've appointed them, we have a specific roles that these people have. The overall goal of the advisory committee is to assess properties and determine if they're being used for their best purpose, and if they can be declared surplus, meaning that the committee comes back and says, I don't think we need this property, so we can explore other options, whether that is a sale, a lease, or exchange, and other options. They come back with a formal board recommendation, so they don't make a decision, they just present the information that they've discovered to the board. So it's a six-step process that they go through. In brief, they first, we present them with all the information we have on property. It usually involves enrollment, what's happening on our property, how we project in future we're going to use the properties, give them all that information. And then based on that information, they look at all our properties and say, are there any properties that we could recommend declaring surplus? Meaning the district doesn't necessarily need them, we can either relocate programs to other sites, or we just don't need them, we can consolidate on other sites, and then those sites will be declared surplus. They also seek community input, and this is a key component. They have meetings, every meeting is open to the public, there's public session, public input required. There's also two specific public meetings that we have that is announced throughout the community, saying that we invite people to come in and make comments about the uses of the property and what we're recommending. At the end of all that, they come up with a list. So they say, here's all the properties, here's some that we think might be declared surplus, and here's some things that we think you might consider doing them, doing with them. They come up with a final recommendation, which is a report, and they present it to the board. And again, this is just recommendations based on the input they've received from the community and the information we've given them on the district's current and projected property use. And then that report is brought before the board, the board reviews that report, it's usually long, it has details about every single meeting and then a recommendation based on the information. And then you can accept that report, and then you can decide what to do based on that information. And again, it's important to stress, this is just a report and a recommendation, no decisions are made by this advisory committee, it's just suggestions to gather more information. So that's the process that's generally required by the education code. The board in 2017 adopted a resolution authorizing the formation of an advisory committee, and what that resolution basically said is authorized us to seek individuals who want to participate. And then we come back and present the specific members of the board and then start the process. So that, in a nutshell, is what's required by the law and the process going forward. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
So in the selection of the people who, you have a, you have an application process, who is the final person, or who are the final group that selects the people that will be on that committee? Is it the board, is it you, or is it, how does that work?
So we, and the legal counsel goes through this list that we've listed up here, and makes sure that we can find individuals that each meet each one of these categories, and then we present the list to the board for approval, and we'll document, we'll say each person's name and how they...
The applications go to you in terms of selecting the people that are, and then you present it to the board?
Yes, it goes to district staff in consultation with legal counsel, and present it to the board.
Thank you, that was a very comprehensive, very clear presentation of what's going to happen.
And just let me add, too, we had a prior discussion about bringing those applicants to the board to get board input on what the committee looks like.
But I think for the purposes of our discussion tonight, it's important to kind of give, not direction, but to have some consensus as to what we're looking to achieve with this committee. So if you have an opinion, you know, as to what area, you know, just so we can use, we could guide the committee when they convene as to what we're not absolutely interested in doing, I think it'd be helpful to hear that discussion today.
I don't know that I would be able to do that at this time. I think that that's something that I would like to hear more about in terms of what the community, what the faculties, what the teachers, what the peoples have to say in terms of what's going on after they make some recommendation. I just don't think that I can, at this point, I don't have a crystal ball, and I can't predict what's going to happen in, say, three years, or when, when things are more in place in the district.
I understand.
So I don't think that at this point I can make that statement, or make some recommendation, or give them an idea or direction. I don't think I can do that.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
Thank you for staying and presenting this. I just have one quick question. Is this like an assessment over every property the district owns, or just, or the Laskey property, or the district office?
Yes, that's a good question. So the law requires the advisory committee to look at all properties holistically, just because a lot of the decisions are going to be based on what is used. But the advisory committee can key in on specific properties. In other words, say, the district office, for example, we can tell the advisory committee that we feel like we might be able to use that property for some other reason, we might be able to move the district office somewhere else, and the advisory committee could take that under consideration, but they holistically, you look at all the properties, because it makes that example. So the advisory committee would say, okay, well, the district office, maybe we can move that over to property B, and then use the district office for something else. So it's a holistic approach.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Margot?
Okay, thank you. So I think, I think, Mrs. Hacker, you're probably maybe looking for the board's intention in forming this? Is that kind of what we want to give direction on?
Yes, and I guess I have a question if, well, you know, let's go around and then I'll ask another question.
So let me say this. The origin of this conversation really came in 2016, when the oil well operation ceased, and we knew that there was going to be a decrease in revenue from the oil well. And the board at the time thought about what are options for us to do something about generating constant revenue? And we looked at the district office, that's why it's on here, is the district office the best use of that land? Could something else be done? And these are questions that will be posed to the 7-Eleven committee. I think it's a very intelligent way to go about solving two problems, dealing with a piece of potential surplus property, I use the word potential, and secondly, addressing a constant revenue stream. And I think both of those need to be examined seriously. Now, we've tried to do this, obviously, for three years, right, because this started back in 2017, right? We said, that's when we first formed this committee, and I know we gave, we were waiting for demographic studies and so forth. So I look forward to what the committee will bring back to us. I hope it is robust and gives us a lot of food for thought, but I agree with this, you know, we kind of, on the onset here, say, review of district office and Laskey properties, there's two buildings on that property. So I, and for those of you who know, the little triangle there, it is, it is just a fascinating piece of land that is very underutilized. So I think that, hopefully, they'll look at that closely. So I'm glad we're doing this and getting this going. Thanks.
So is your preference to look, or would you be most interested in having more information specific to the district office, Mr. Margot?
Yes, I mean, at this time, as a board, I totally agree with that. At this time, I don't think there's anything else they can look at, as according to council, they are entitled to, and what they do, I'm not going to even say.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So, but I'm just saying that as one board member, my interest lies in the district property, the district offices.
Thank you. I'm looking for clarification from the board. Thank you.
So my, my view is a little more expansive. I think that the district office property is one that's been kicked around for a long time, but we've never actually come to a solution. But I also think that the teacher's parking lot at Beverly Vista is something that's been talked about for years. There were actually plans drawn up for that, that I dug back in the agenda and found when it was intended for classroom use in a parking lot, a subterranean parking lot. And while that's not in the current bond measure, I still think it's a relevant asset to talk about, if it's something that we need to develop, either as a parking lot or additional classrooms, or as an income-producing property. So I think, my view is not just to focus on one, I think the district office, I think the teacher's parking lot on Elm, and I think also Hawthorne. I mean, we're talking about being forward-thinking, we know that from the first conversation that you guys had, it's now three years later, we don't really have any forward motion. It's our job to look ahead, and we know that El Rodeo is coming back online, and we know we're going to have to migrate families from Hawthorne back to El Rodeo, and so now is the time to have a conversation, a real hard conversation, I think, about...
I only disagree on Hawthorne, if I can just answer what you're saying. I just think it's, that's too premature. We have dedicated bond funds for the auditorium there, which, which we are waiting to work on. It's just, I think, we can't give direction on that, we can't stop them, but we can't, I wouldn't say that that, it would be a direction I would support as far as the board's intention, because it's too premature. It's just too premature.
Right, but if we have, if we're having discussions about developing the district office, which we also don't have bond funds for, then that also would need to relocate to a different place. So if Hawthorne becomes that place, I think it's reasonable to have the conversation. That's literally the whole point of the committee, is it not, to talk about repurposing uses?
It's their purview to talk about that, but I'm just saying, as far as giving intention, my intention is to focus on the district property, because I believe that's the only possibility of a revenue-generating entity that we have. So that's...
I think we should look at all three. I think we should look at Hawthorne down the line, I think we should look at the parking lot on Elm for Beverly Vista, and I think we should look at the district office. And to be honest, if anyone wants to go beyond that and has suggestions for alternative uses or expanded uses for any of the properties, I'm interested to hear that. We are really fortunate in our community, have a very deep pool of talent to pull from. So I'm really hopeful that this will yield some interesting recommendations.
So I think we're going to need consensus, just so that we're clear on the direction, although we can't really give direction, you can, you can jump in, but I think we don't, I tend to agree with Mr. Margot in that it should be the district office. I think that's initially how this all began. I think we're so far out from really touching Hawthorne three years out, I think it would be premature. Maybe that's a discussion to be continued at a later time, once, you know, we hear back from the committee, and they identify use, or, you know, maybe repurposing the district office for a particular use or redevelopment, you know, I'm interested in hearing that, and then maybe that would segue into Hawthorne, but right now, I think that would be really premature for me. Mrs. Marcus, I wouldn't ask that you weigh in, because, right, we need three people to kind of...
Well, I, just to go back a little bit, I am more interested in learning what the committee will have as a whole, rather than zeroing in on one property, because I think you need to give them a chance to be creative and to come up with some new ideas. And if you say, well, we're going to start with this building, you're already limiting them, and I'm not so fond of the idea of limiting them. I think we should have some more options open to us, and that's just my five cents worth. I think that we shouldn't specifically give them some, that's my opinion, that's just...
Right, but it's the board's purview that we form the committee in the first place, and I think with the understanding, at least the original intent of the committee was to look at the district office property. That was the original intent. I'm not saying they can't look at anything else, I want to be on record saying that's their purview as the committee. I just think that the whole impetus for all of this was the district office property. That's all I'm saying.
And let me, may I ask a question of counsel, please, just to get clarification as this discussion is evolving? When school boards can make an announcement that they wish to engage with the 7-Eleven committee, isn't it, is it not usually with an intent or a vision of some idea of notion what they want to accomplish with that committee?
Yeah, and we need to be very careful, because the law makes it clear that the advisory committee is, like everyone has said very well, is free to review all properties, but they do want to know what the board is thinking and what direction they see and envision. So it's not directing them to look at any property, but it is, and this happens all the time, the advisory committee, the first thing they're going to ask me is, why are they forming?
This committee.
And we will make it clear to them that whatever we tell them, that this is just what the board had in mind, but you are free and you're legally obligated to look at all the properties. So we'll make sure that that's clear to them. But we do, we can give them direction and say, well, the board is looking at this property and this property in particular.
I think it's important to, since, you know, this is not a process like FFST was, where we, there was a, you know, it was decided that this was the path, and then you got applications, and then people came. Like this, this requires lawyers involved, this requires, you know, following protocol and the law. So I don't want to waste access that we have to this, you know, great group of resources in our community. You know, if, if it's decided that some of these properties, since they're not in the current bond, if it's decided that there needs to be another bond in order to actually build or address any of these things ourselves, that can only happen every even year. So we have a two-year window that we need to plan for. So I think having the conversation now about all the different properties is a really important thing to have, so that we can plan, because as we know, especially with facilities and DSA, to actually execute anything takes years. So to start having that conversation now and to plan for, well, maybe in 2022, or we need to, you know, ask for another bond measure to be on the ballot, or 2024, I think it's our job now to have those conversations.
Right, but that wouldn't happen from a 7-Eleven committee, that'd be a different venue for discussion or need of a bond.
Recommendation?
You know...
That could be part of their recommendation.
So I tend to just, I feel like the vision right now is very unclear. I think that we have, we're just going to say, go and look at all of our, I mean, I think the reason for a 7-Eleven committee, and I go back, and that's why I asked the question, is very particular, it's very specific to a need that the board has identified. I'm not sure I'm hearing that we all agree that there is a need, and just being creative for the purposes of being creative and discussion of looking at all of our, of all of our sites doesn't really determine, you know, what it is we're looking to receive as far as feedback. I mean, if you all want just to get, have a committee convene and have them get very creative about all of our sites, and just kind of entertain that notion, I guess it's something we can do. I don't see how that's practical.
Well, Mrs. Hacker, can we ask, is there anybody opposed to, from the presentation, at least having them look at the district office? And like I said before, whatever else they do. I mean, are you guys opposed to them looking at the district office?
No, I'm not opposed to anything.
Okay. So we're all, we're all, we're all in agreement on that, and then what, like I said, whatever else the committee does, it's their purview.
Right.
So I think, I think it is clear, I mean...
Is that clear for you?
Counsel, is that...
Yes, I think it is important to have some kind of direction, because you do run into problems where advisory committees don't get any guidance from the board, and then they spend four months, because they're going to...
Yeah, I don't want to do that to anybody.
But I think we can couch it in saying, look at the district property, but also consider other properties, too, and maybe start with the district property and see where that leads, but make that their focus.
Is that fair?
Yeah, I just don't, I mean, there may be some creative things that can be done. I'm not talking about, I'm talking about, but we're at the seams at the high, at the middle school right now. We may need to, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. So I think, you know, that's demography again. So I'm interested, well, I was not on the committee, I wasn't on the board during the time that you were looking at the district office as a possible means of income. I mean, I think that's a great idea, but I, you know, that's just one facet that I think that that committee will study. I mean...
And it is a fine line, a lot of boards struggle with this idea, and I understand that. And part of our role as legal counsel is to make sure that we guide the advisory committee, so we hit the point where we're focusing on specific properties, but we're also making also making it clear that they can expand, and if they have unique or interesting ideas, they can put that in the recommendation. So that's kind of on us. But we do recommend that there's at least some guidance, and so focusing on the district office would be a...
And I just want to clarify, I have another question for you. So once this committee convenes and they finish their work and they recommend whatever they recommend, is there a timeline to act on that recommendation, or is it pretty much endless, or?
It's open-ended according to the law. Of course, if you wait too long, people might say, "Well, the information that they're basing their recommendation on is no longer valid." But the law says you can use that recommendation forever.
Got it. Thank you so much. Any other questions?
I was going to ask one question.
Sure, Ms. Marcus.
And you've been on several 7-Eleven committees, I would assume, because of your expertise in this area. When you have done this in the past and made recommendations to various school districts with their properties and so on, how often do the recommendations get acted upon that you make? Do you have any idea that some...
So, yeah, I've done a lot of advisory committees. Usually what happens is they have a list of recommendations. So they say, "Here's our first recommendation, here's our second, here's our third." I'd say, just ballparking it, about 90% of the time, the board follows at least one of those recommendations. The other 5%, they just don't do anything, and then the last 5%, they do something completely different, which is allowed legally, and there's nothing to prevent them from doing it. But obviously, you're getting a lot of information from the advisory committee, so usually it's followed, at least one of the recommendations is.
Great. Any other further questions or discussion? Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion for the rejection of claim number 582603.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass is four, zero.
I make a motion to approve section 12A, ratification of a...
No, we're not, yeah.
...approval of a change order to bid number 718-19 at Hawthorne School for the I'll second. All those in fa, I'll second. All those in favor?
I just, before we, I have just a quick comment, and I'm probably going to take away what Mrs. Walker Schuman wanted to say, but, you know what, you can say it. You can say it. You could say it.
It's not often that we have the pleasure of a change order that actually reduces our burden.
Right.
So I just think it's important to call attention when it happens. This one in particular and a couple others on here do just that. So it's really, it makes me very happy to see, when we see, this one in particular was a $14,315 drop in savings. So, you know, there's many challenges that we have, but when we get it right, we really get it right, and I think it's reasonable to call attention to these things. So we're really happy to have this change order be to our benefit.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Four, zero.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the acceptance as complete and the NOC for the bid number 700-18/19. I'm not going to go into a whole alphabet there.
I'll second that. Any comments? And I guess, do we note it the same, right?
Yep.
Well, this is the NOC for the last change order, so.
Okay, so all those in favor, please?
Aye.
Any objections or objections? None. Four, zero.
Wait, we can, Mrs., Marcus, we can combine these two, because it's the same project. So we can make a motion on both of these, if you'd like.
Okay, great, okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve change order number one to RFP 1819 BV002, and the acceptance of the completion of the RFP, and noted, authorize the notice of completion. So that's items D and E.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Save $10,000 on this one.
Okay, all those in favor again, please?
Aye.
Aye, any objections or objections? None. Four, zero, thank you. Okay, moving on to professional and official business. Mr. Margot, I defer to you.
Okay, so Mrs. Walker Schuman and I, sorry, make sure this is on, my report disappeared. I apologize. I'll wing it. So we serve on a facility subcommittee where we meet almost weekly, but a lot of times we, probably three times a month, sometimes two, depending on the schedule of everybody. Dr. Bregge and Mr. Roach serve on the committee as well. And we have been focusing on two things in the last couple of months, the first of which is the facility, this master facility work schedule. And that's the new system that, which all board members are welcome to come to the facility office and look at the weekly logs. They have them there for us if you want to review what's going on on all sites, projects that are submitted either generated at the board or district level, or projects that are generated at the site levels. Those all appear in there. They're divided by school. It's an amazing way to see how the facility department tracks everything going on. So anything from the water fountains to the black box theater, those are all, those appear on there until they're completed, and they're tracked every week as to the progress. We don't go through the whole list every week unless the department feels that there's something that should come back to the board, and then if there is, then it does. So, and it has. So sometimes it's enclosed, sometimes it's in open. The other thing we've done in the last couple of months is we took a tour, which we invite the board members to call up Jeff Pileman, and he can arrange to take you guys through the high school to show you the process of what's going on in B1, B2, B3, and B4. Although B3 and B4 right now is dealing with still some hazardous waste removal, so we're not actually allowed in, but you can look from the outside, and they have, they can shoot, you can see, like a display, exactly how they're dealing with some of the soil issues in that building. B1 and B2 are moving magnificently, and I do recommend that my colleagues, when they can, get over there to get, take a walk through, because it's really, it's great to see finally construction program working as ours is, and I'm so proud of it.
I believe this is the same tour since December.
So much has been done since December. You're going to want to go see it. You're going to want to see it. So, yeah.
I wasn't able to go in December.
Mr. Spitz and I went with the COC.
Right, so when you can, when you're up to it. It's not, not all of it's the easiest walk, so be careful. But, and then we also looked at El Rodeo last week to see what was going on in there, and it's, they're just about wrapped up with all of the abatement, demolition, and they started what's called the spa repair. And I don't know if you guys were, Mrs. Marcus, I don't know if you were on the board, I know, Mrs. Hacker, you were, when they started the spa repair here at the high school, where they take all the structural concrete that's all around, and they have to, the DSA tells them where to remove some of the concrete to reveal the rebar underneath, and then they make sure the rebar is safe, and then they put it back together. So there are, I remember the high school had hundreds of spa repairs. El Rodeo has dozens all over. So they showed us that. They showed us the excavation of footing areas to pour new footings, and they're started on that process. So it's starting to get going at El Rodeo. So the committee has been doing those things, and everything else really, there's times when issues will come up in the committee, and Mrs. Walker Schuman and I will say, "Bring it to the board. We're not even talking about it. It goes to the board." And Dr. Bregge can attest to that, too. So it's just not for committee consumption. So, but it's everything that the committee does, and I'll be happy to bring more regular reports back, but I also welcome my colleagues to go to the facilities office, look at the master, the master bond schedule that is now wallpapering the entire trailer from now until the completion date, like four to five years, and the facility weekly logs on the work being done. So that's my, that's my update.
Thank you.
I only want to add one little bit.
Please.
Because so much of what we talked about over the last year and even during the campaign was about accountability and trying to, you know, create the infrastructure that was lacking, so that there was more accountability and follow-through. And one of the things that we've been able to do on the facility subcommittee is create a process, so that when each school site has an ask, like the water bottle filling stations or like shade structures, there's actually a physical form now, where they have to write down, they have to have a date, the principal has to sign it. So there's really knowledge of what it is that's being asked for, you know, remarks justifying why it's being asked for. And so we actually are able now to follow through, and things don't fall through the cracks. And we end up in a situation where, you know, the principal, the school site principal always knows what's going on. They never have a project that makes their way to us without them being informed, which used to happen sometimes.
Yeah, there's an incredible system in place by this team, by both, and both, the M&amp;O department, Ken Haas and Don Blake's department and his people are working so remarkably well together, because both understand that there'll be a time when the bond program completes itself and everything gets turned over to Ken's department. So they have to work hand in hand to make sure that the maintenance is part of the planning and executing process way back, way here at this stage, even though it might not be something that Ken has to deal with for two to three years. They're involved every step of the way, and it's, it never happened like this before. It's just, it's great to see that.
It creates the infrastructure, so that no matter what, you know, person comes into whatever role, that structure exists for how this particular thing is done. And actually, that gives us the ability to write things like manuals. So it's, that, I think, was one of the more remarkable things that we've managed to do as a team this year.
Thank you for that, Mr. Margot, Mrs. Walker Schuman. Any questions, Mrs. Marcus, or any questions from anybody else? Great. So we're going to move on to item with schools, with school visits. So I'd asked for this to be put on the agenda. Mr. Margot was there when we set the agenda. Thank you for being there with me last week.
Thank you for having me.
For your input. And so one of the things that I thought we could do as collectively as a board, and it could be a discussion how you all want to do it, but I think the best way to do it is to agendize this as a regular board meeting, and we take a site visit to the schools. Just to kind of see, we've invested heavily this last year in our infrastructure here as we configured, and I think to do our due diligence and walk through the campus and kind of see, you know, what is happening, what's, what are, you know, what our opinions are, you know, what jumps at us. And to have that discussion as a board, I think would be healthy. So, and please feel free to jump in if you have other ideas as far as how you envision these school visits. But I think we made a very significant investment, and we changed schedules, we added things to the schedules, curriculum. And so I think the time is right to do this. I'm kind of sorry that it's already March. I would have liked to have done this earlier, but that's just when kind of what happens, the nature of the beast, that school goes so fast, and there's so much on our plate. So, and please, I ask the staff to my left to please jump in also, because it'd be interesting to hear from you, and, you know, I know you all have different areas that you touch on, and, you know, it'd be helpful for us to hear from you as well as this discussion evolves. Mrs. Marcus.
I think it's a great idea to go to the schools. I think that's something that we should do more often, because I think that's for us to get a real feel for what's going on in the school. And, you know, sitting at this table, we're supposed to be doing what's best for the kids, but we haven't gone out there to see the kids and see what the programs are like, or see what some of the changes have taken place. And to, and we do have to make an appointment, I think. It's not something you just can't just drop in. You need to let the, so that they can make sure that you're coming, and that you can, and maybe ask for what's something you would like to see. I mean, I would love to go and see some of the electric classes, like the Maker Space, and to see what's going on in there, and see the science lab, and some of the classes like that, and to see, and maybe even spend a day watching the teachers in collaboration when they're supposed to be meeting and discussing how they're going to be working together. Some, you know, sometimes they may feel that they don't like the board there. I mean, they're a little bit reticent about us being there. So I think it would be, if we could go out, we could present a different side of ourself, so that we don't look like someone who's coming in to, I don't know, think on something or to do something that's, you know, that we're there to eagle-eye something, just to check on something. I think we have to go there just to make sure that we understand what's going on, so that we can see the school in progress. And I think it's a great idea. I would hopefully look forward to it.
So are you, I'm sorry, are you, just to clarify, are you in favor of being together collectively, all five of us, or?
No, I think that we take turns. I mean, you know, maybe two of us at a time, so that we don't do anything that's not legitimate as far as the Brown Act is concerned. But I think to go in pairs and talk about...
Well, if it was agendized, it wouldn't be an issue.
Huh?
If we had, if we posted it as a meeting, it wouldn't be an issue. All five of us could go. We just, we'd have to, we would be required to post it as a meeting.
As a meeting?
Yes.
It's a possibility. I think that each of us have different interests in being there. Maybe some people want to see one thing, others see another. I mean, if you go, you can spread out, I would imagine. So it's not like you have to stick in a core group.
Okay, Mr. Rukubro. Thank you, Ms. Marcus.
I think it'd be great if the full board goes as a collective unit. I think that's more effective. I do like the idea of a school visit, because, yeah, I just think it should be a collective unit going, so.
Mr. Margot?
Yeah, I do agree. The one thing Mrs. Marcus said is if we want to break up and look at things individually, I think the principals, the site administrators would know best which classes all five of us would be a little too daunting to go into. We might not want to do that. So we could break it up into pairs at that point, or singles. But I think it's a great idea to agendize it, so the community knows that we are all there, and we are all interested and invested into the success of these schools. So there's a record of it, right? If we all just made our own personal appointments with Dr. Bregge or something, there's not necessarily a record of that. This puts us on record as being at the schools and looking at where our investment is and how it's paying off. And if things need to be adjusted, or we can hear from certain people at the sites if we want to have, they want to have a voice that they don't usually get to speak to us here, you know, it's bringing, bringing the board to them. And I think it's something not to be done a lot at all, but I think we should hit every site this year, before the end of the year, and really get a good insight of what exactly is going on in the district. So I think it's a great idea to do this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Margot, Mrs. Walker Schuman.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's reasonable for us to be there. I agree with Mr. Rukubro. I think it's better if we go together as a unit. I think that's important. And I also, you know, these types of visits at a school site can be invasive to the school community, to the students, to the teachers, and to the admin. So I actually would prefer for it to be consolidated onto one day where we're all together, instead of having it be a revolving door that pulls the principal, or the counselors, or the teachers away, and deflects the students from their studies. So I actually, I would rather that it happens on one day altogether.
You mean, all sites on one day, or just?
No, no, all of the board together at one site on one day.
Yeah, yeah.
Instead of, instead of, you know, rotating.
Exactly.
So, yeah, I think it's a fine thing to do. I think it's reasonable for us to see, you know, the wonderful community that we've built in all the different ways, and to hear from people as to where they feel like there's still work that needs to be done. Yeah, I support the business. I think it's great.
I think, I think there's tremendous value in having five board members there at the same time, and I'll tell you why. I think very seldomly, people think that, you know, I know that I rarely talk to Mr. Margot, or, you know, to Mrs. Walker Schuman. We don't, you know, you both just made, just stated that you both went to a, you know, a site visit at El Rodeo, and how wonderful would it have been for all of us to have gone there together, so that we can all, you know, five sets of eyes and sees more than two sets, I think. And to have that discussion evolve together, I think is organic. And, you know, we all want, I think we're, we share the same concerns, we share the same vision, which is to make sure that we are there to support our school, community, our stakeholders. And so I think it's powerful to have five board members visit the schools and really see, you know, what, just to observe. And, you know, my take might be different from Mr. Margot's, but I'd like to hear what Mr. Margot has to say, because maybe I missed something, or maybe he, maybe he misses something, and together we can figure it out. And staff is there, and they can answer the questions. And all of us would benefit from learning in that experience, as opposed to just going individually or with partners and couples. And yes, I agree. I think that it's already a distraction for us to be there to begin with. And so to do this through multiple visits would be even more distracting, I think. So just to be more practical and more effective, I think it would be best to go together. And, you know, we have to have an opportunity, too, in that visit, or maybe after, to discuss what are, what we're seeing, you know, taking, you know, we have an opportunity in that process of moving from one place to another, to discuss, to say, "Yes, you know, I like that," or, "Why is Horseman doing this and Hawthorne is not?" Which is the obvious question that we get asked over and over about everything. So I think the right time is now. I would hope that we could do this aggressively, and it wouldn't, you know, I don't want to wait till June or May. I think there's only two sites really, Hawthorne and Horseman. We can go to BV and then High School. I think even the High School, if you all, I'm very interested in what's going on in the High School. I don't spend any time here, other than sometimes...
I think we should do all of them. I agree.
You know, so I know we've invested heavily in the middle school, the K5s, but I'd like to know, you know, what is going on at the, at the High School and here, you know, because I think we need to address the High School for sure. There's a lot of need here. So anything else that you want, Dr. Bregge, is that kind of clear for you, or?
Yes, because we couldn't do five schools in one day.
No, no.
But we can certainly put something together, and I think that you would be really surprised. We have some incredibly talented teachers, and I think that you would be very welcomed into classrooms and their schools. So we'd be happy to do that. I also think the...
That's refreshing to hear.
The follow-up piece is also really important, because you may have some questions along the way about if you saw something along the way that you might want to ask, and it might be a question that somebody else has. So I think that, kind of at the end, some sort of like culminating conversation, so that we can answer questions, but also engage you in some further conversation. I think it's a great idea. I know that our staff would be... I know that our staff would be open to that.
Yeah, and I want to hear, you know, I, I don't know if this would be appropriate, so I'm just asking, do you think that if staff has an idea, or they have a recommendation, or, you know, they really want to make something known to the board, I would hope that we would be equally accessible in that, you know, I don't know if there would be an opportunity, but I, I think it works both ways. It's not just what we want to know. I think people also want, I think staff, and maybe not parents at this time, it wouldn't be appropriate, but definitely staff. I mean, if, you know, if, if there's something that, on the wish list, or something that they want to, I'm, I'm not sure where we would do this, how we would, how we would, you know, get this information, but I think it's, I'm just throwing it out there as something to think about.
So, and I think that we can, we can talk about it, and then present to you what's the best way to, to find out. I think, I think, you know, to do this, I want to make sure that, you know, it's purposeful. And so it is important to get your interest areas, too. For example, you may, one board member may have an interest in seeing what does that common planning period look like? What happens during that time? There could be somebody else that says, like Mrs. Marcus talked about, you know, Maker Space. What does that look like? And, you know, where, where is that located?
It's a lot of fun.
So I think that it's, it is a combination. And I think that if I, if you, I can solicit some interest from you on what you'd like to see, but I also would like to reach out to our principals, too, because they could also add to what the visit looks like. And they, you know, it's not too often we get to show off the, all the great things that are happening. So I think it's a combination.
But I would like to say that I, I don't want anything to be staged for us. I would, it would be very difficult for us to really get a good bead on what's going on if everything was kind of predetermined and rehearsed.
I agree.
I think the whole school should be notified that the board will be there, and may or may not be in your classroom.
Right.
So, so that way, either everybody's on their game.
Yep.
Or not, but I just, I know from evaluation times, I know you're being evaluated, it's the best day of your year.
Yep.
I would love, I would love, as one board member, just if this would be helpful to Dr. Bregge and his question, I, I would like to see, for the K5s, it's very simple. Yes, Maker Space is one, and everything else that we've invested in. You know, everything else. All the classes that, that were added to that, to the curriculum. So what does it look like? What does it feel like? You know, what it, what it, you know, what, what is going on in the classroom?
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Bless you.
So...
How technology's being used.
Yes, how technology. I love the idea of what you just mentioned, how our collaboration time, you know, how is that being done? Maybe I'd like to see that more so at the high school, and maybe the junior high. I'm not sure, but I'd like to defer to my, to my colleagues. Any ideas? Anything else that jumps out at you that you want to see?
I think we've all, I think we've all, I think, like I said, I think everything should be fair game when we're assembled. If we decide that we've seen enough of this, and let's go, hey, they're doing a PE class, let's go see it.
Right, so...
So I think, I think we should have the leeway of that, and be fluid. The other thing that, Dr. Bregge, you should find out is how to properly list this, because we're not going to be in one room. So we have to figure out we're not violating anything the way we list the agenda on this.
Sure.
I think it would be similar to our field trip, what was it, Los Virginas, where we took?
For the performing arts?
Yeah, we kind of, we kind of went everywhere.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly...
It was properly agendas. I would, I would assume it'd be very similar to that.
I think so, too.
Posting.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Thank you for that. I think that was very helpful. Communication for board members. Mrs. Marcus.
No, I have nothing. I just was very interested in the superintendent's report today, and everything being on the agenda, so that we could really discuss it. I think it lends itself to being a very productive board meeting, and I think it was very nice to have all these issues to talk about during the meeting.
Good job. Mr. Rukopuro.
Yes, a couple.
Did you win today, by the way?
What?
Did you win?
We did not win.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Free game.
Yeah.
You look great in orange.
The other team did not lose. We'll put it that way.
Yeah.
Go Beverly. All right. Okay.
Next Wednesday is the PSAT-SAT day, so good luck to all sophomores and juniors taking the exam. Mr. Seaman was very involved with that. And the seventh graders are going to El Capitan next week, I believe, so hopefully they have a fun and safe trip. And also, on the school visits, and any tours that you guys do to facilities, please try to include me, because I would love to be involved and able to go to the sites and see the progress.
So I'm going to send, just to respond to that, I, I was going to send an email to Mr., did you say Mr. Pileman do that, or to Mr. Blake? For, for...
For the, for the construction tours?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could send it to...
So I'll ask if he can agendize it, just so that three of us can have the option of going, so we don't waste his time. So I'll invite you.
Thank you.
Okay. At the last meeting, we had a very robust conversation about parking around BV, and I had made some comments about using my personal permits and printing permits. And I got a lot of flack. I did not know that that was not allowable. So I just want to apologize for everybody who I sent into a tizzy over this issue. I did not intend to do that. I was just looking for viable solutions for our community and our faculty at that school. So I will not do that, and everybody, just calm down, okay? Second thing, I just want to wish my son, Solomon, a happy birthday. It's his 20th day, so...
If we're going to do an apology tour, I also will apologize for suggesting that we should do an adoptive teacher program on South Crescent, and have the staff introduce themselves at Beverly Vista. So if there was anyone that was offended by that suggestion, I apologize. That's definitely not the direction we're going to go in. Next item. PTA leaders are supposed to inspire participation and draw people together for the benefit of the school and the students. And unfortunately, that's not always what occurs. But when it does, it's a beautiful thing. And I can think of no better example than the Beverly Vista Masquerade Ball that the PTA put together last week, that Mr. Margot and I were able to attend.
And Dr. Bregge.
And Dr. Bregge, and the cabinet, and the leadership, and admin. Yes, your mom was there, too. I saw her. But it was just such a great example of PTAs from a bunch of different schools, with a bunch of different cultures and traditions, coming together and finding a way to work together in a, in a really cohesive and collaborative manner. And this is the second event, actually, that I've been to, that's a BVMS event. The last one was at SLS Bazaar, which also was just a fantastic event, lots of good energy and good spirit. So it was really nice to see it again, this group of people coming together and really celebrating the school, and the students, and the work that they're able to do together. So bravo, it was a really, a job well done, had a great time, and I hope that these things will continue, these events will continue, because they're great spirit builders. My last comment is that it's really important in our roles as board members, and for the public, to understand that our, our job is not to rubber stamp everything that comes before us. And even when we agree, and even when we vote affirmatively on something that's before us, that doesn't mean that we don't have differing views or opinions, and it doesn't mean that those differing views and opinions are not relevant. So I think it's important to remember the value of being able to have meaningful discussion, even if we disagree, even if we have different viewpoints, and to make sure those things are represented. Because just as we were all elected by the electorate of this town, not one of us represents the entire community's views. So I think it's important to make sure that we protect the platform of board members being able to have a different view of opinion, and be able to share that different view of opinion, because it does resonate with some families, and with some students, and with some teachers, and with some administrators, and, and cabinet members, and leaders. And, and anything that we do to try to nip that, that freedom of expression of a board member having a differing view is really problematic, in my view. I think that there's always going to be disagreements or different viewpoints among colleagues, with leadership, with parents, with PTAs, and even with BHGF. And that doesn't mean that BHGF isn't a fantastic organization, and they don't have my full support, and they do. But it's okay for me to have a different opinion about when the school should start in the summer, what, what, if it actually serves the families that are in this community, and to help other community members that struggle with the same thing I'm struggling with as a parent, beyond just being a board member, of making sure that my kids have access to different opportunities on a schedule that works for us in this community. So I recognize that crossroads is more expensive. I recognize that there are a lot of different options for not only private options for summer school, but also for public options. And if it's in the interest of the community to share those things, so that people know what their options are, I don't have any problem sharing that. To the extent that BHGF summer school is the first choice, it always has been for me, it simply doesn't work with my summer schedule. So I'm sorry that Mrs. Trost was offended by my posts. I'm not going to agree to discontinue that. I think it's a community service, and I think that's reasonable to share. I still think that BHGF is the best number-one choice, but to the extent that that doesn't work, there certainly are plenty of other options. And I will say that guidance counselors, they don't actually tell you where to sign up for summer school, because this is an ongoing conversation that I've had with Mr. Seaman, and with the guidance counselor that my children fall under. And what they recommend is to seek an OWASCA-credited school, but they don't actually tell you what particular school has, let's say, Algebra I or geometry. That's something that each family has to do on their own. So that's not just a role of a guidance counselor in our school system, that's actually on the parents to do the research, to figure out what best serves the needs of their students. So I'm, again, sorry that Mrs. Trost was offended. I never want to create that kind of environment, particularly with a really important partner to the district and to the board, as BHGF is. But there are some times that we're going to have differing views, and that should not be a bad thing. So that concludes my comments.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone that March 11th is Career Day, and I know that Cindy